The United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation united, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. All righty, you ready to roll, guys?
Yep.
Let's have a move we approved again in this chamber.
Second.
For a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Prove the minutes from eight twenty-one.
Aye, so move, after looking them over, seem to be in order, make a motion to prove the minutes from eight twenty-one.
Second tip. First and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Cory, motion carries. Any comments from the general public today? You've been on vacation, so you'd like to tell us what you've been doing. All righty, I guess we'll move on to Cory. Let him up.
Yeah, definitely.
With Community Family Resources?
Yes, and I have Lori Laman with me. She is our counselor that actually covers Humboldt County. You can go ahead and pop up here, too. So, we're from Community Family Resources and we're here today because September is actually National Recovery Month, so we're recognizing National Recovery Month in the month of September. We have a couple of events going on, and then I talked to your honor. We also have a proclamation. So, I actually have it here and I'll read it very quickly, and you guys did a proclamation last year as well, so this is just recognizing again that September of two thousand seventeen is National Recovery Month in Humboldt County as well as the nation. Says, "Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance abuse disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas an estimated forty-seven thousand patients were seen for substance use disorder treatment services in the state of Iowa in two thousand sixteen, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and White House Office of National Drug Control Policy and Community Family Resources invite all residents of Humboldt County to participate in National Recovery Month, and now therefore Humboldt County Board of Supervisors by virtue of the authority vested, me by the laws of Humboldt County, do hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand seventeen as National Recovery Month. In Humboldt County and call upon the people of Humboldt County to observe this month with recovery programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme, and witness where of I hear on two set my hand, and then it goes on, but that's as fast as I can read. So, yeah, thank you. So, our proclamation. And then I had left this off because I was not sure if you were going to put it on your county's letterhead, but I can email you later about that. So, I will go ahead and pass this around. So, we have, and I know that you guys have, and we have copies as well, but we actually have a walk run in Ames on September sixteenth, and that's a really exciting event for Recovery Month. It's only ten dollars, and we really promote anyone who's been, which a lot of people are, but affected by substance abuse, families, friends themselves, to come and participate and celebrate, and it's a really fun event. And then we also have a Recovery Month event on September thirtieth in Fort Dodge, and there'll be some marketing things going out about that as well, and of course, in the newspapers. We invite everyone to attend that. And then we have a little handout for you guys, just to sort of see the clients that we served in Humboldt County this past fiscal year, so that would be July first, two thousand sixteen, until June thirtieth, I'm sorry, two thousand seventeen, so if you guys want to pass that out, and you'll see our overall numbers from that year, so Lori can kind of go over those numbers then, and I'll also pass out this five-kip flyer.
There's some little cards.
Well, these are probably better, actually.
So, for Humboldt County, seventy-seven unduplicated clients were served in this past fiscal year, and it says for all treatment services, including substance abuse gambling and mental health.
And what we also did want to point out, again, those are unduplicated clients, so if Lori started to see someone, let's say, in June of two thousand sixteen, and then they continued their treatment for three or four months or whatnot, they wouldn't be represented in those numbers, because those are unduplicated clients. And then, of course, we see people, you know, that might relapse and return to services or need to receive extended services, and so those are just unduplicated clients, so...
Are those self-committal or referrals, or how do you get, how do seventy-seven get to services?
Oh, sometimes, every now and then, they can be voluntary, they can be civil committal, they can be DHS referrals, probation, court, OWIs, there are several different ways.
The other, I'm on that board, so I get to partake in it every month. We had our meeting on Thursday night for our monthly get-together, and we're still in the process. We bought that property behind the town thumb there, so hopefully, in years to come, they're going to have the facility there. They got three different, is it three different in Fort Dodge buildings?
Uh, yes, yes.
So, our hope is one day we're going to be able to put it all under one roof, and we don't have everybody in that location and not having to have vans running, people here, there, and everywhere. But, you know, we're still in the process of, we do have the property, now we're just trying to figure out how to get the concrete and bricks to come, but, you know, for the seventy-seven people that Humboldt County serves, I think that it's an awesome location for us, being we're close, but it does do a lot of good for us here in Humboldt County, so we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, so, yeah, important to note, too, Lori does see clients here in Humboldt County, right? Downtown Humboldt on Wednesday, so for group and individual, so nice to know people want us to drive to Fort Dodge every time we meet.
May I make a motion that we have signed the proclamation declaring September a Recovery Month in Humboldt County?
Second that motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Well, thank you very much, and if you guys would mind us taking one more second, if we could get a picture.
Oh, no.
Just take a picture with Bruce.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Yeah, they're like the spokesman for that.
Yeah, I'm the spokesman. And the other thing is, you know, for, I've invited you guys on the board, but for anybody that is interested to go down there and take a tour.
Absolutely, yes.
Michelle and the staff has been basically having an open-door policy, trying to get as many people through there to see what facilities look like now, and hopefully have a, the architect will have a plan of the new improved, so...
Absolutely.
Where we gonna stand?
Did he just hear the whole place?
Probably.
All right, let's flip up.
Oh, great. Behind you guys, thank you.
Oh, Carl, I'm making Bruce.
Morning.
Good morning. Can't break the camera.
Um, I don't know if that's the word, I've got some... But, we'll get through it. I guess the good thing about having a board meeting right away is that if it goes bad, it's not my fault yet, right? They're going to postpone it a month.
I'll hold on to the cord, thank you.
Expect this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a good halo behind us.
Cory, did you want me to put this on our panel and head them? That would be great.
Yeah, and then, okay, perfect. Thank you.
How well that hurt. Do you want me to email it to you or email it to you?
You could email, would be perfect, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. All right, well, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all your work.
Are you going to do the roll-in personally?
I am, yes, I will be there.
Okay.
I will be there, yes.
Very good, good luck with that, Mike.
I don't have to run, I just have to help, so that's...
Tiffany, we have Tiffany and Larson and Angela Westlink.
We're actually gonna have McKinley and the new PR person.
Oh, sure.
Sure.
I'm McKinley Bailey, and I'm the new executive director for Building Families. As some of you may know, Michelle Walters resigned a few...
August fourth.
August fourth, and so I just started last Monday. I'm super excited to be in the position. As you'll notice, our, the staff is just incredible, there's all kinds of energy and passion about what they do, and it's going to be a great place to work. And so anyhow, moving forward, if you ever have questions or concerns, there's Angela and Tiffany, and you can get ahold of me as well. Just a little bit of background, from two thousand six to two thousand and ten, I served in the House of Representatives, and I represented Hamilton and Wright County, so a lot of new faces here in Humboldt County, and you'll see me around trying to get a better lay of the land, since I'm not quite as familiar with this part of our territory. So, after that, we spent some time in Costa Rica, had some kids, worked for a company called Carlson Wagon, Carlson Wagonlet Travel, and ended up back in Iowa next to Grandma and Grandpa here a few days ago, so we're pumped.
We want to hold it against you that you're from Hamilton. We'll welcome you over to Humboldt. Eric is our representative, right on that board?
I am, yes, so I'm familiar with these ladies, and I'm glad that they have McKinley take over for our show, that's awesome.
Big shoes to build.
Well, I'll go while she's over there. I'm Angela Westlink, I'm the parent coordinator for the Parent Connection Program, and thank you very much for letting me have this opportunity. I have not gotten to present to the Humboldt Board of Supervisors, so I appreciate it. What I do is I teach volunteer free parenting classes for any parent or grandparent or foster parent or guardian who has children ages zero to age eighteen in Hamilton, Humboldt, Wright County. My goal is prevention, to prevent child abuse before it happens, I work, and also to just create strong, happy, healthy children and families, you know, to have a happy home, a home versus a house for these kids to grow up in. I focus on strength-based, so the strengths of the families and the strengths of the parents, every parent wants to be a good job and do a good job, and so we focus on those strengths and give them the tools so they can be the best parent that they can be. And I guess my classes are all free, and they're all voluntary, so they have to want to be there in order to do that, and it's a lot more successful, and they're short-term. So, I don't come in there forever, but it's shown that about six weeks, if they take six weeks of classes, it can implement real change in families, and so a lot of my classes are about seven weeks. I also do group classes in the three different counties. I work with CFR, I've done that in Hamilton and Wright, and it just hopefully branch into Humboldt. I've worked with parents, I also do a support group for parents who have children with disabilities, and I do preschool parent nights where we work with parents who have children in preschool once they receive a scholarship. And the past year, I also was re-credentialed, so I go through a credentialing process with the state, and they come through and make sure that everything I do is okay, and then I was, they gave me credentialing for five years, they said that my program was meeting the standards. So, when it, so last year, I saw sixty families, seventy-two parents, and a hundred and thirty-five children in in-home or group classes, three hundred and fifty-six parents in preschool parent nights. We did forty group sessions, eighty-nine in-home sessions, and forty-one non-in-home, but they were just parents that were not in group and not in in-home sessions, but outside of that. One of the things that I really am very passionate about is reducing sexual abuse to children. It's not a comfortable topic to talk about, and a lot of parents don't like to talk, nobody likes to talk about it. Or if we do, we teach our kids stranger danger, but in fact, is that most of the time, ninety percent of the time, if somebody our kids know and trust. We have really high rates of sexual abuse for children here in this area. Wright County is number two, last year we were number one, Hamilton County is number fourteen, and Humboldt County is number seventeen. We were number nine in Humboldt County a couple of years ago. But the scary thing is that those rates are high, but those are just the rates of people who have been founded and convicted and they have done, you know, that it's known about. Only three percent of childhood sexual abuse is ever found out. One in five Humboldt girls, little children, and one in ten Humboldt boys will be sexually abused before their eighteenth birthday. Every one of you knows a child or an adult that was sexually abused as a child. You probably all know multiple people that were sexually abused as children, you just may not know that that happened to them. If you go about your day today, in this courthouse, there are people that were sexually abused as children. When you go to Hy-Vee or Fairway or the movie theater, there are people there that were sexually abused as children. And last month, I've talked with people in Humboldt that were sexually abused as children, and it was never turned in. So, one of the things my program really works with is preventing sexual abuse that happens before, and having to equip parents with the knowledge of what the real dangers are. It's not the guy in the van with the candy and the puppy, it's the people that they know, it's the trusted people that groom a parent, a child, and a community, so they're perceived as safe. And also, the grooming habits and how they prepare for their children, how the internet prepares kids, and what the little things that parents can teach children and to protect them, because there are small little things that you can do to protect your children against being a victim of sexual abuse. And so that's one thing that my program really works on. I don't know if any of you have heard of the zombie run, but we, this is our fourth year for the zombie run. This is, a hundred percent of this proceeds from this program is used to prevent abuse in Hamilton, Humboldt, Wright County, and it's, you know, used to prevent sexual abuse for our children, right here in Humboldt, and it is, it is a problem. What this is, it's a fundraiser that goes to the program to prevent this. It doesn't go out to administrative fees, it doesn't go out to local, other places, it's spent locally. And it's a fundraiser, it's a five-kay run, and then a fun run, Twilight Run, we're doing two runs, and they have infected zones, and people run through infected zones, and the zombies try to take your belt, which is a flag football-type belt. It's a fun thing, everybody gets a T-shirt and a medal, and like I said, all the money goes to prevent that. So, if any of you are interested in coming out and doing, making an infected zone, like I could have all the supervisors, you could show up and we'll put the makeup on your face, and you don't have to run, you can even sit in a chair, and all you have to do is go "Ah," and you have done your part to reducing sexual abuse in Humboldt County. It's October twenty-eighth, and if you want, you know, or tell people to come to the run, or, you know, encourage that, you know, support that, and if you happen to do an infected zone, your business or yourself, you get your name on the back of a T-shirt, so it's pretty good advertising, too, for you, so... But, does anybody have any questions about my program?
Is that kind of like, we heard a presentation down Isack last week, Outfit or Two Center, are they doing the same thing you're doing, or you work together?
We don't work together, I don't know what their presentation was. Was it on human trafficking?
Some of that.
Okay, um, human...
Admitting abuse, sexual abuse?
Yeah, I work specifically on reducing sexual abuse for children. And so, we do a program called Darkness to Light, which is a free program, I mean, we use these funds to do that, and it's a program that any business can do that, and it's worked, it works on reducing sexual abuse for, and the risks for children. Because one in twenty males is an abuser, you know, there's, the statistics are incredibly scary, and like I said, every single one of you knows somebody who was sexually abused as a child.
So, you put it in front of the kids, for people that are mandatory reporters, who they can talk to, like a teacher, like a pastor, like a, you know, is that, is information you get to them, because...
What I do, like, an example, we, I work with parents or caregivers or teachers or anybody, I would do a presentation, and it's an abridged darkness to light, fifteen to twenty minutes, and we would talk about what grooming is. A lot of parents are not aware that, you know, just having somebody, like, say Uncle Joe comes, and he just puts his hands in front of your child, and just tickles and starts like that, or maybe has him sit on your lap, you know, and he's getting the child used to his hands on your, the child, you know, or maybe just the difference of, you know, there's grooming, where, and the grooming takes it where, imagine yourself a hunter, you set up your hunter stand, you put your camel on, and you prepare to get your prey. That's the same thing that happens with sex abusers for children. They prepare, they prepare the community, they prepare the parents, they prepare the child, they, so that you trust leaving your baby with them, and, you know, they, you know, and then we give the parents tips on just simple things to protect them. One example would be to teach your kids, instead of saying, "Go give Grandma a hug, go give Grandpa a kiss," you could say, "Would you like to give Grandma a hug? Would you like to give him a kiss?" And in doing that, you're empowering your child to make the decision if they want to give physical affection to somebody or if they feel comfortable. And if they, you know, and then I tell parents to honor them, "Well, you don't want to give Grandpa a hug, well then blow him a kiss," or, you know, give him a high-five or wave to them. So, just those simple things really do make a difference on how your child becomes, you know, can become a victim of sexual abuse.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Why would some counties or some areas be more higher in sexual abuse than others? For example, Wright County, what's the reason for that?
There's multiple reasons or multiple theories, not, you know, I don't know for sure. It's, you know, it's kind of like, it's not a black and white thing, there's layers that make up complications. I think it is, police do a wonderful job of turning it in, but remember, only three percent are founded, that those are the ones that are caught, it's the ones that are not founded. But, we have, we don't have always the most access to mental health services, and when you have mental, don't have the best mental health services, you may, you may self-medicate with substance abuse, which increases your substance abuse rate, or, and then that maybe puts your child in a higher and more dangerous position. Another thing was, we don't always have access to safe childcare. If you don't have a safe childcare and you have to be at work, you may leave your place, your child in a place that maybe isn't the safest, maybe, you know, and we know that. Or, just, we just, you know, education and prevent is the number one way to reduce, to prevent, for prevention.
Is substance abuse is probably a big part of it, then?
Yeah, yeah, you're in much higher risk if there's substance abuse involved.
Would that be considered the main reason for it?
No, no. Multiple, there's, there's multiple, you can't just pin it down to one particular reason. So, you know, not having safe childcare, you know, if you don't have a safe place to go, then, but you have to be at work, you may leave your child in a place that's maybe not the safest. Or, you know, and also predators, predators are so good at their job, they will hunt down, and they pick the weakest child, the most vulnerable child, or the family, and they will target them, and they will, they prepare their victim. And most children, they have to tell seven to nine times before they were believed that it happened.
Anything else for Angela at all? I know, there's a lot to absorb, so early in the morning. So, I am Sydney Larson, I coordinate the Be Inspired Program through Building Families. I'm one of... I'm one of nineteen grantees in the state of Iowa. I receive PNA funding that goes through DHS and then goes to ISOP and Iowa, and they are my manager, and so Building Families holds the contract for the Be Inspired Program. It is the Be Inspired CAT program, which is Community Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention, and that is more than just talking about preventing pregnancy, it is a lot of adolescent sexual health topics. So, I get the fun stuff, the awkward stuff, the uncomfortable stuff to talk about. I target range is thirteen to nineteen-year-olds in Hamilton, Humboldt, Wright County, and really educating the parents and caregivers that work with those, those teens that are their primary educators. I get to work with school districts, so right here in Humboldt County, I get to go in for a few days and work with Mrs. Nielsen and some of the other teachers, anywhere from grade seven all the way up to twelve. I can go in for topical presentations as well as implementing evidence-based, age-appropriate, and medically accurate information, and comprehensive programming, so covering anything from absence all the way up to what are some safer options, if and when teens are choosing to be sexually active, but absence being the primary focus for that. I also provide a lot of youth development activities as well, service learning, getting students and youths engaged in their communities, because ultimately, the more involved that they are, the less likely they are going to be involving themselves in RSD haters, so really trying to get them to buy into being healthy and successful, because youth are a bunch of people, and they're leaders, right? And if they're not getting the tools and the skills, they need to be healthy and successful, it's going to be harder for them later on when they are in those leadership roles. So, just as much as we're talking about eating our vegetables and exercising appropriately, as tough as it is to talk about adolescent sexual health is one of those important parts of that whole puzzle piece to being healthy and successful. So, one big thing that I try working on is declining the STD and pregnancy rates within the three-county area. Humboldt County, they are in that population size of less than twenty thousand. So, from those twenty-four counties that are in that population size, from two thousand eight to two thousand and twelve, to now for twenty sixteen data, went from seventh out of the twenty-four counties to twenty-two out of twenty-four. So, it's showing that education is really working, and an increase in access is really working. Out of the ninety-nine counties, so for the statistics from two thousand thirteen to two thousand and sixteen, went from thirtieth to eighty-one. So, that's Humboldt County. I still have a lot of work to do in Wright County, and it kind of goes back into some of those same head of risk factors, when it comes to substance abuse, when it comes to a lack of access and lack of education, those all really play a vital role in those increases. I have put together folders for you guys, I know it's going to be a little overwhelming, so I did switch it and put it towards Humboldt County's fact sheets, that are going to be on the left side for you, just, you know, when you have downtime, if you want to read through, you can feel free to. One out of two sexually active young people will have an STD by the age of twenty-five. Most will not know it because they are not getting tested, and most do not show symptoms. I work with a lot of teens that are so fearful of their parents finding out that they have an STD, that they are choosing not to go and get tested, and they are choosing to live with an STD and the symptoms up, rather than having open communication. So, what I try doing is getting the facts starting early and talking often, making it an eighteen-year conversation, as awkward and as uncomfortable as it is, and all these different components in my program help to really build and empower these youths to make healthy, informed decisions. So, I will pass around, you guys can each take a folder here. Feel free to do that. I just wanted to cover some of the top things that I did at the program this last year. In Hamilton County, we've had a youth summit, we're hoping to reach out and do that in Wright and Humboldt County. We did a triple-A award and approachable adult award, where youth and other individuals could highlight and nominate one individual in each county that they feel are approachable. Chris McHaleson was the Humboldt County recipient. We had a lot of informal conversations, we hosted a Breakfast Club movie night, where we took some of those tough topics and hosted a movie, and then were able to have a youth adult connection conversation afterwards by providing a study guide or discussion guide after the movie in Webster City. We held a dodgeball tournament, where funds raised were able to go to peer inclusion and peer acceptance, so some of the special ed classrooms were able to receive some different toys and resources that are going to help engage inclusion. And then we had intergenerational community cafes, and one, I was recertified as a sexual, certified sexual health educator, so that gives a little bit more expertise to the role that I play when it comes to adolescent sexual health topics. And then we are in the process of launching actually a social media campaign. We are in a wired world, and so really encouraging teens to make sure that they're going to medically accurate websites, not necessarily just Googling and going to the first thing that pops up on there, and so those are some of the things that highlighted. I served forty-two youth with fidelity, meaning the curriculum that was provided was with the way that it was meant to do. I served a hundred and five sessions within the three-county area, and over five hundred youth, and like I said, your Humboldt youth as well in that. This next coming year, I actually will expand it outside of the tri-county area of Hamilton, Humboldt, Wright County. I actually have a school district of Garner, Hayfield, Ventura that has sought out the resources, and so I'll be picking up some additional youth to be serving, so... That is my program in a nutshell, there's way more, and I could talk about it all day, but I want to be...
So, with you, we're glad our numbers are high.
Well, yes, yes, you do not want to be number one for either of ours, so it's, to me, it's showing that whether it's my program or just an increase in education and access is making progress. And we don't want, just when the numbers are going down, we don't want to stop doing it, because then we're going to go right back up there. And that's what we're seeing. And that's what we're seeing overall throughout the United States, is there has been a decline in teen pregnancy rates. Um, the STDs rates are still a little scary and it's a lot of fear. It is a lot of, how do I have these conversations? And the more youth adult connections we have, hopefully it's going to help decrease that. Okay.
One thing that I think is important to make the connection between both of these programs is that, you know, when children are not being sexually abused, they're more mentally healthy, they do better in school, there's higher educational attainment rates. And at the end of the day, what that translates into is people who are qualified and capable of serving, meeting the needs of the businesses in the area. You know, it really translates into economic development through higher education or maybe workforce development is a, is a better term, through the higher educational achievement rates and the mental health that comes around from avoiding teen pregnancy from, from, you know,
some of those RSD-
From stopping the child's sexual abuse and the mental trauma that goes along with that. So we do see, we do see real impacts in the community over the long term.
And I, I don't want it to make it seem that we're always digging in these deep, dark, uncomfortable conversations. We will be doing fun, youth, family-friendly activities at the RV TV event here. Um, on September seventh, we are bringing back the capes to do with families. Because we also, I mean, the more fun these families learn how to do and engaging in youth and adults together is great. So it's not all the dark jury stuff. We do have some fun as well, so I just wanted to throw that out there as well. So we'll be down there from four seventy-
Tell her which one you're wearing.
So we will allow it. I, I am an I N T alum, so I will be loyal forever, true for life. But I'm also a dysentery up here and the students tell me this every time I go to classroom.
They're screaming for her.
But we appreciate your time this morning. If there's ever anything else that you need, contact information is on there. I did put the flyers for the zombie run in there as well.
I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to ask for a motion on claims, so I can set sightings.
I'll make a motion, I think it was, uh, a hundred and ninety-three thousand eight seventy-nine seventeen cents. And drainage of twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-one seventy-two.
They had all seconded.
I got first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'll ask, uh, Representative Sanders come up and we will have a discussion on, um, Master Matrix. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Walt. Morning.
Morning, guys.
How are you?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to have you here.
Yeah.
Really good at shaking hands.
Yeah. We only have, only two-
Gilmore City Fun Day Parade.
Only, only two parades left.
Then you get to unhook the trailer for a while.
Then we get to unhook the trailer. Put it, put it in the shed and-
All righty, we, uh-
I left mine in the car.
We invited the gentleman to come up-
Can you make it work?
So we could visit today about the Master Matrix. I'm glad that you accepted our invitation. I'm glad you have here.
There we go. Carter's got one. We're ready.
The Master Matrix is something that was developed twenty-some years ago.
Two thousand and two.
Yeah.
I was in the Senate.
Fifteen years ago, yeah. And, um, it's something that is, affects the counties because we're the ones that deal with it. And, um, we'd just like to see maybe some conversations down at the State House about it because I think over, over time, um, operations have changed from what it was fifteen years ago.
You might introduce Keith and Mark.
Oh, sure.
They're also setting in for Master-
Yes, Mark Campbell and Keith Denclaw from Webster. They come up to sit in today and if you'd like to join in the conversation, you're more than welcome any time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, I have two chairs in the county's back.
No, I'm chairing the county. So would anyone like to start it?
Well, I guess, first of all, we've had several discussions and, and, uh, I, I think that the time that we had questions for one of the, one of the sites that was, uh, had put together a, or did the, the Master Matrix and, and the way it was scored and, and with our people, um, we had some questions. Well, when that came to us, we rejected the, the plan because of the way we had scored it. That was appealed to Des Moines and basically when it went to Des Moines, if, um, Melanie went down there and we kind of felt like, um, it was just already pre-done, predetermined, um, decision before we even got to, and, and it was over the way that they had land for manure spreading, the easements. They had it for one site and they also had it for this new site. That was our question. And I guess, you know, we're, we're here to help police, I guess, for lack of a better term, um, to use the, our knowledge. Um, we don't want it hundred percent controlled by any means, do we? And I think all we were asking for is the guidelines that you have given us. We, we looked at it, we, we didn't feel that it was in the best interest of Humboldt County. So we questioned it and when it went down there, um, we kind of felt like the people that were down there just, you know, they didn't really, wasn't even hurt. So it, for us, you know, it, when it comes across the desks, we, we would like to know that, are we supposed to care? Are we, I mean, are we, we're doing what we're asked to do, but yet sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle for a lack of a better term, I guess. And, and I don't know, um, what our options are as far as where we go, how we appeal, how we, the state has more control over it than we do.
Well, there's some concern about too, communication, about duplication of manure on the same piece of land, which I guess would determine is legal, but we didn't know about it. Nobody ever told us. So we don't know how to get the communication cleared up.
Well, the state law says that we cannot do anything. We can't change, we can't regulate, it's nothing. All we were requiring is when they come, excuse me, when they come to us, give us a copy of their matrix, their maps, distances and stuff. We get a copy of a copy of a copy and by the time you copy it a dozen times, it gets to the board to decide what's going on. You cannot read it, it's black. If you get it in a light just right, you might see a line and a number. You can't see it, so we've asked for copies. They won't give them to us when they apply for the application.
Who says that? Who says they won't give them?
Iowa Select and the ones that we've dealt with that's come in and wanting to put hog houses up, they will not give us a copy. They, they give us a copy to coffee and we can't read them. Then when they come up to their ma- Master Matrix, uh, they score the minimum. Uh, it's not where it should be. I mean, fifty percent's all they have to have. And, you know, and out of that fifty percent, that's not a passing grade, but we can't change anything. All of them that comes in and being built are on a hillside, they're next to a creek. We asked for a site survey, we can't get it. Because when they say, "We're going to put it right here," that could be anywhere in forty acres. Most of the time, they buy five to ten acres from the farmer and they put the site there and when it gets built, that building may be a hundred feet closer to the well or to the creek. So we're asking for a site survey. We're asking for them to, to record their, uh, Master Matrix or their applications for manure spreading, to record them, where they've got easements at. They won't do that either. So our hands are tied because the state law says you cannot do nothing. You can't act above what the state law says. All we want is a little control and a little cooperation with them.
Um, I would like an example of a matrix site where the buildings were built closer to the river creek than what the plan said.
Okay, on, um, hundred and thirty, it's on the bold, bold blacktop. That one got moved, what, seventy-five hundred feet to the east of where they told us it was going to be?
Closer to the waterway.
Yeah, it was closer to the, the waterway there, runs down to the-
To a waterway or a creek?
Waterway that led to a creek.
Yeah. Just across the blacktop to the south is a creek.
Just read the Humboldt paper a couple of weeks ago, you'll know another example.
And also-
So, but, hold on, you said that about a couple of weeks ago and that's not Iowa Select, that's a local farm.
Didn't say it was Iowa Select.
No.
I know, I'm just-
But it was a Master Matrix project.
I'm just-
It's not just, it's just not just Iowa Select, it's all of them.
Yeah.
They come in and they want to build, well, you know, we're, I like pork as good as anybody else. In fact, I'd eat pork over beef. But we want them to cooperate. I mean, we don't want it to pollute, uh, pollute the streams downstream. We don't want all of our manure running down to Des Moines. And that's just what's happening. They build them and they don't get them, you know, put where they're supposed to be and by that time, you've got manure running all over. I, you know, all we want is a little cooperation from the companies or the, that's wanting to build them. If you put less than twenty-five thousand head or twenty-five hundred head in a building, you don't even have to do nothing. You don't even come to the county for it.
The only way we hear about is to get a driveway permit.
Yeah.
That waterway you're talking about, that's just kind of a small waterway. Actually, the water off my farm runs down there. What's that going to hurt if there's a hog building kind of halfway?
Close to that.
It's not going to hurt as long as they don't have a leak.
They had piping that was external that went right up there. If they had a leak in their pipes, it would have went to this waterway and then to the creek.
So how many, how many sites have leaked in the last ten years or fifteen years since the Matrix? Are we worrying about something that we probably don't need to worry about?
Well, we might be, but, you know, at one time Humboldt County had almost three hundred ag drainage wells.
We're down to just a handful left to close. But we've got a lot of natural sinks. We've got a lot of places that, uh, they've drilled and you drill into limestone, you got fractures, so it's going to go down. And we're not against the hog buildings, we're not against the sites coming in. What we're against is, or asking for, not against it, we're asking for some cooperation to be able to read the sites as a site, uh, survey done on it so we can find out where these buildings are going. Like say, if you had twenty-four thousand or twenty-four hundred head and you put a building up, you don't have to come see us. You can go right across the road and do it again, right across the fence line and do it again.
There's, you still have to get a permit. If it's, if it's, if it's over twelve hundred and fifty head, you have to get a permit on finishing. You have, you don't have, you don't have to come to the county.
But you have to find the matrix or anything else.
But you still have to follow the setbacks on the rules. So you can't, you can't build a twenty-five hundred head or a twelve hundred and fifty, a twenty-four hundred head one year and turn right around and put another one right next to it without going through the matrix.
That's the problem, the matrix, that's the problem.
But you have, you have to go through the matrix.
I didn't think anybody could ever fail the matrix, but by God, we had it happen. I didn't think it was possible.
But, but, but the problem-
Who do you work for, JD?
I don't work for anybody, I'm a consultant.
Yeah, you are, who are you a consultant for?
I sell hog farms. Who, who are you a member of?
I'm a member of myself.
An ICCI, so let's-
No, I'm not a member of ICCI. That is an incorrect statement, it's a lie.
Better get control, Mr. Chair.
You work for B.A. Lily? Yes, I do. You're a B.I.S.
Local farmer.
Guys, guys, that's enough.
Yeah. Well, we're here just to have you down at the State House to look at it. Because, I'm just going to use this as an example, the, this fireworks law that they passed. The cities can override when they shoot them off. And they say, "We have no control over what happens in our county with hog buildings." That, that's, to me, that's wrong, but, because we're the ones who know what goes on in the county. Every county's different across the state. It's, uh, I just think we need a little bit more control or over, over it. And they, they may take the matrix and break it down into sections, so they have to, yeah, meet each section rather than overall scoring. I think that'd be a big improvement so the matrix can score, say you get fifty, fifty percent, maybe that's fair or maybe it's not, say fifty percent. I don't think they ought to be able to get them all in one section. And we spread that out so they, you know, a few here and a few there and a few there. You can ignore some of the sections, still pass the matrix. So I think we change that scoring a little bit and solve a lot of problems.
Didn't we have, uh, DNR speak to us last year down at ISAC? And the majority of the questions that the, the supervisor type people asked, the DNR people down there, the guy just said, "Oh, I can't, I don't have any answer for that because it really don't..." I mean, the DNR feels like their hands are somewhat tied too.
EPA.
Because of the way that the rules are set and, you know, it's like once they figure out a way to get around it or figure out how, you know, stay under the level. And I guess for us to be police, and I don't, to be really honest, I don't want to quit the job, but that's part of what we get. And for us to make sure that this is set the way that the state wants it set, then, you know, we had them take it to Des Moines and it was just, and changed the acres and we weren't even notified. We wouldn't even have to go down there, would we?
No.
They'd have just called us and said, "They got two hundred more acres." We wouldn't have to waste our time, send our people down there to be told, "No big deal."
Can I say something in that particular instance? Um, when we did go down to the EPC hearing, we got the hearing, they said that our information was erroneous, that the acres that were supposedly double dumped on and are spread on wasn't correct. We hadn't, we hadn't seen this information. And then the people that represented Iowa Select, they, they did say, well, they had a clerk up there on an easel and saying, "This is the acres." Well, the APC had no time to examine this before. They couldn't see it from where they were sitting, it was probably a two-by-three sheet. And when they ruled against us on it, there's no way they could have known if that was actual, these acres that they presented were proper or not. I mean-
Actually, the state never received that information either.
There's a lot of failures in it. I, I blame, I don't think it's the farmers. I think it's the people like Iowa Select and that and these other ones putting up these work for facilities. That's the problem. And I think legislature has always done a real good job of able, staying out of this issue. In the past, we've had a governor that's supported it and he, through his executive rules, that's how big, big his move. Now, things may change. Now, I think the legislators ought to get involved with the people for both sides. But they have not in the past. They've stayed out of it. But people and the legislators work together on this issue.
For the most part, the farmers that work here, live here, they take care of the, you know, the ground that they're, that's their livelihood, so they, they sure as heck aren't going to go out and double apply.
They have neighbors.
Yeah.
They've got to be friendly to it.
So, I mean, those people we applaud and, you know, um, that's, that's the people we're, we're hungry that, you know, they are passing those on to their kids to, to show them how it's done. But, you know, I, I guess what we're worried about isn't when we are supposed to do something, but yet when we do it, they just, we get looked at like, "Oh, don't worry about it. It was just a mis, mis-
Communication.
Communication and the acres were here, there, whatever. We aren't supposed to do it, we'll just let it go? We aren't supposed to do it, we'll just let it go? I don't wanna do that. I have a lot of friends that are involved in that, so I know they're doing a good job.
It's a, it's a big part of our economy up here, so the hog industry. Malvegas?
I, I wanted to just go off of words briefly, and that's, that was the same mindset that I had when I went down to the EPC hearing. But when I stood up for my county, when I have the county's best interest at my heart, because that's my job, I was told that I was frivolous and I was wasting their time, and they asked that we lose our privilege of scoring the master matrix for the rest of the year. That, to me, was frustrating, because here's a big company coming in, they're again trying to strong-arm our county. And, and we're looking after our farmers and our best interests. To me, that was frustrating.
Keith, you guys, anything you wanna bring up?
We just said you're listening. We agree with you that the master matrix is overdue for, to look at it, and there's things on the master matrix that people take that probably don't reflect the times.
Like what, Keith? I mean, I, you guys haven't given me any examples of what you wanna change.
A really easy one would be building from a church or a school out in the country. You know, I don't think there's a school left in the county, they're all in the city.
There's one right down the south of Rangard, right, you, or south of Stryper, right on the country, right there on the interstate.
I guess I represent District One, which is San Jacinto and Clare. So I, I talk about my district, and in my district, we have no schools, the churches have all closed up. So, they take points for that, they're irrelevant. You know, they, they do, I mean, if you look at the master matrix scoring, half the scores are taken on the same things, I mean, exactly the same things. But, don't turn around the road, you get points for that. You know, well, you're not gonna turn around the road, further back from the road. They should all be set further back from the road. The cement foundations, they're all built with cement foundations. You know, those things are outdated. Let's, let's throw some of them out that they're taking, and make them take, like they said, make them take some of the other things that really do help us.
So, let me ask you this, on all the sites that I've seen and been involved with, how many sites do you think don't make it to the level of submitting it to the county? How, how many times do you think farmers go out there and go, "I'd like to put a barn here." They run it through the matrix and go, "Shit, it's not gonna score, we need to find another site." And, and you never know about it. So for Louis to say that he's only known of one site to be failed the master matrix, I don't think that's true. I, I think there's a ton of sites that have failed the master matrix that never make it in front of supervisors because they know they're not gonna pass. So why would they submit something they know is not gonna pass?
I guess I still represent my district, Badger, Vincent, Duncan. I have four sites, and that's it.
Okay.
And there's not another person in my county, my district that wants that.
Okay.
So I have to represent, as a supervisor, they voted me in to represent that side of the story.
And that's fine.
And they expect me to fight for them.
So are you trying to change the master matrix to keep hog barns out? Or are you trying to change the master matrix to somehow improve water quality, or, I guess I'm...
Water quality, health, the health reasons of each thing. We had the chicken thing over there, they're built too close together, you know, they're built too close to Iowa. You know, as soon as they, they build them right next to the gravel road, rendering truck runs by, well, they build them back a quarter mile. You know, so they don't, they know the health of the pigs has gotta be involved too to this, not just the health of the community.
Okay.
So how does the health of pigs changing a quarter of a mile make any difference?
Well, I would think it would help a little bit if there were sites back a quarter mile and set them right next to the gravel road, a hundred feet off the gravel road.
Not a sub-travelled road, not a boggy day.
Well, I think it'd be, it'd help a little bit.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, is there anything else you wanna...
Well, yes, one thing, uh, we'd like to see changed, for example, we was down at the ISAC meeting, uh, Gene from the DNR told us that we were, we could require them to put filters. Put your filters on the exhaust fans and stuff to get rid of some of the smell. According to the state, we cannot make an ordinance to do that, we can't make them do that. That's one example there that, uh, we could require them to put filters on. I guess where I'm coming from is, well, if you look in the Dairy Magazine, maybe a couple of weeks ago, I don't wanna see us like Wisconsin with brown water, and that's what's coming. You know, we're just dumping it everywhere, so we gotta be careful where we dump it. Uh, we had one come in wanting to dump it right north of Bradgate, which the field is all sand. And Bradgate has bad water. Uh, I think they've got it cleaned up now, but they did have brown water or bad water over there. Uh, I hate to see that throughout the whole county. And that's where I'm looking at is, when you come in, give us an application, let's work with the application, uh, you know, be truthful with us and work together on it. They won't work with us.
This is not a kind of related subject, I know this has been discussed before, but as far as classification of these hog buildings or cattle buildings or whatever they are, they're all classified agricultural. And I don't have a problem with that, local people, agricultural. But if some out-of-county, out-of-state people come in, that's really a factory. They ought to be classified as commercial. The reason I say that is that we have to maintain the roads, we have to do this, we have to do that. And say they get two million dollars worth of buildings, we don't get a thing out of that. All it does is lower every farm acre maybe an eighth of a cent or something. We still don't get any more tax money, but we have to maintain the roads and keep it ready to go to and from the feed trucks and so forth. I think that's a crime. If that was a grease gun factory, we'd get all kinds of money, but it's a pig factory, we don't get anything. I don't have a problem with the local people, but I do have a problem with out-of-state people coming in and calling that other than commercial, because it's really commercial, in my opinion. I'd like to see us talk about that a little bit, the legislative level.
Well, first of all, Carl, you can't do that, 'cause that's unconstitutional for, to say, "Because you live here, um, we're gonna tax you different than if, if you live in Ohio and build something," you can't do that, that's unconstitutional. Two things have to be taxed the same way in the state of Iowa. So, you, you can't do that.
Even if it's owned by different...
Yeah, as long as they're, as long as they're Americans.
Okay.
If it's out, if it's out of country, if it's a foreigner ownership of farm ground, it's a different situation. But if you're, if you're an American and you own something in Iowa, we can't say, "Because you're from Ohio, we're gonna tax you commercial." But if you live, if you're from Humboldt County, we're gonna, you're gonna have an ag land tax.
I'm just looking for some way to get some reimbursement.
And I know what you're, yeah, and I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying you can't, you can't do that in Iowa.
It sounds to me like a lot of your frustration is coming from just a lack of communication and a lack of feeling like you're being heard. Or kind of wondering, what is your, what is your duty as county supervisors? What are you asking us to do if we can't do anything, correct? And I think that we can probably, you know, if there's just a lack of communication between the EPC and, and their, and their, and the county supervisors feel like they're going over their heads, I mean, there's no reason for that to be happening if they're supposed to be included in this selection bid, right?
Well, one of my, I mean, a legitimate concern, I think, is I'd like to see a copy of when you claim that you have a plan that you can't even read. Um, I'd like to see an example of that, 'cause I, I would have a problem with that. If it's been copied so many times that you can't, if you can't see the maps, um...
But does that have to come from the builder, or does that come from the state?
You submit, when you submit a matrix site, you have five copies. One goes to the county, and the rest go to the DNR. Two go to the, two go up to Spencer, to the engineer, and two go down to Des Moines. So there's five copies floating out there, um...
Are you talking about genuine copies that are readable?
That's, well, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying we, you know, when, when Twin Lakes does it, they're all original copies, I mean, they're all colored copies. So, in the maps, I mean, I can, I can under, if you have a map, I mean, maps are the, the guts of the whole thing. If you don't have a readable map, I can understand where you'd be frustrated.
You got any copies coming?
I've been seeing one copy in my office, and by the time I copied them off, even if I call and copy them off in color, it's difficult for these guys to read them.
Okay, by law, folks, it's meant six copies, yeah?
No, it's our resolution that we require them to do that, but right now, they're not doing that.
I don't understand that, I could copy twenty copies and it looks like the one that's in the copy.
Color, color maps, I can see.
You want colors, I can color.
So, so you're saying you, the original copy you get is fine, but by the time you get it to these guys...
Right, by the time I make five more copies for my board of adjustment, it's, they're... David's right, a lot of them are ineligible, you can't read them after...
Do you make five copies off of one copy?
Maybe have them required an email, so that it's in a digital format and you can track them.
Um, just something won't do that. He, the one gentleman I work with is very derogatory towards me, he's not willing to work with me at all. I'm up against the work law, and I've asked nicely.
Well, I'm just saying, make that a requirement, you know, today and age.
So, so you can't.
I'm, I'm not saying, you know, I'm saying the...
You would, you would think in today's day and age, with digital phones and, or the ability to get email, it would be a lot... And I guess as far as my, my closing comment is, we aren't asking you to go down and tear the matrix up and start all over and say, "Here, we're, all we're asking for is, if you want us to take care of this part of, beginning of it, then give us the ability to, you know, whatever we're supposed to do, we'll do it gladly, but we, we can't do it and then send somebody to Des Moines, two people to Des Moines, and by the time they get down there, oh, forget it, it was no big deal." Well, it was a big deal, 'cause we spent time and, and hours and whatever, so that's all we're asking, we're...
Communication is a big...
Bruce, I just, well, you said it too. There's just not another farmer I know that wants, wants to overapply manure. I mean, you can't even get it. And so, get that out of these people's heads. One other thing I wanna state, huh, farmed all my life. What did we do all winter long? We hauled manure on top of the frozen ground, and there was four farmsteads per section, and nothing was injected, it was all laid on top of the ground, every bit of it.
This is back...
Yeah, in the old, in the old days, yeah.
That's all it is. And then in the spring, what, what happened? It melted, and you could actually see it go down in ditches and into the creek. I mean, we're so better off today than we were, but you can't get that in these people's heads from the city, they don't understand. Everything's injected, what, seventy-eight percent of the manure is injected? What more do you want? I don't understand.
I agree with...
It's not, it's concentrated, it's more concentrated.
A pit never leaks out. Look at your houses, how many people have a sump pump in their basement? Because the water comes in. You build a pit for manure, it never goes out, you worry about water coming in. So this thing, if they're leaking and the water, their manure is going out. Manure doesn't go out, water comes in to those pits. So you put a tile line around it, they check them, they have to do that now. They never find manure in those, because they don't leak. Because the pressure from the ground and the water is going in, not going, the manure going out. So that's just common sense.
That, and the application of manure is so highly regulated, you have to be licensed, and you have to put on so much where you, and you have to keep track of where you go, you can only apply so much based on the results of what the nutrients are in it. Commercial, I can go out there and put as much on as I want. So that farm north of Bradgate, where it's handy, I can go out and put as much commercial fertilizer on, and nobody can say anything I don't have to tell anybody.
And most of those guys that are applying the manure are doing it with the GPS, and they can tell you right down to the, that path across the field, how much... So, those people we applaud, we, we don't have, I mean, it's...
It's the one, one percent that's out there that's making his own rules.
Yeah.
The rest of them are following them.
No, and I understand completely, I understand your frustration with not reading maps and people not treating it with respect, and getting back to you unquestionably, that's not right.
Yeah, well, that's what we're up against, and I don't know how many years I've been on that board of judgment, but, you know, all of them's been that way. We get a map and we can't hardly read the things. And what's, and then you come to the state law, and it says the state, the counties will not make any law greater than the state, I believe it says.
Above and above.
Above the state law. So our hands are tied. And since we've been on the board, we've been down to Des Moines twice, and it was cut and dried both times. Now, the one out on Highway Three, if they'd have told us the truth, they said, "We're gonna put a pit underneath, it's gonna be eight foot deep." You're in a low spot to sit with water ninety percent of the time, and you're putting an eight-foot pit in. Well, that does, three foot, three foot, brought the building clear up, the grade clear up even with the road. So it's the baulder's in that pit. If they'd have told us that to start with, we wouldn't have wasted the county money going to Des Moines and done it.
All that energy.
So tell me how that one played out then? Was that a matrix site?
Well, the, the only concern they had down there was the small, the shallow tiling, tiling in the field. But, uh, they said, they say no problem with the building. Well, if they'd have told us that it was gonna build the land up, so it's out of the flood, so it's out of the water...
But once again, was that a matrix site, or was that, was that just a construction design statement site?
It was a construction design.
So it was under twenty-five hundred?
No, it was, it was a matrix site, they had to apply the matrix. Uh, I forget what you, pardon me on what you're understanding there, but, um, they come in, they applied for the site and everything, and we disapproved it because they told us they was putting it eight foot in the ground, you're already sitting in water. Most of the year round, unless it's a drought, that whole corner was underwater, it's part of Owl Lake. And when they built it, they only went down three feet for their footings, they built everything up around it.
Dave, I'll just tell you, being in the construction industry, that, that's the way almost every site is built. None of them are, are fully eight foot in the ground. Because the problem is, when you dig that three foot out, you have to do something with all that dirt, so they use it as a backfill and get the slopes...
And they all dirt in out there.
What then?
They all dirt in out there, they don't play in dirt in.
But even, even on a, even on a dry site or a, a site that's up on top of the hill, typically they don't dig more than three or four feet around.
They just level it out.
Right.
They told us they was going down eight feet below where it was at there, and that's why we turned it down. We had to...
Why would you turn it down? Because it's not gonna leak if it's in the ground, it's gonna be the other direction, it's gonna take water in.
The way they, the way they said, and the design they had, when it come to us,
they would've been below grade and it would've filled up with water all the time. We didn't wanna pollute the water, you gotta dredge ditches that that runs to right down the road.
How would it pollute the water if the water's running into the pit? It's not running out, the manure's not leaking out.
Once the pit gets full and you can't spread it, where are you gonna put it?
Now, that's another story.
Well, I think that's what he's saying. He's saying, though, the water was all gonna run down into the, from the surface.
Yeah, surface is gonna run into it, yeah.
What he's saying, Ron, is the communication part at the beginning, if they'd have said, "We're only going in the ground three foot, then we're gonna build the, bring the dirt in around," it would've been a lot easier.
Yeah, we wouldn't have thought of it, we wouldn't have...
Same, same.
And, and some of that might not have been known until then either.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, I was gonna put a baseline in my office building, and we got down two feet of solid water out there, I didn't put a basement. I mean, I didn't know that before, I had it priced as a basement. So there's a lot of things that happen, I think, which you're talking, there's just a lack of communication.
That's a big share of it.
And I think that to find out what the boundaries are of what's your job and what's their job, and then to keep that communication open, so one doesn't feel like, it's always the county supervisors are the ones that are gonna feel slid, because the state, a lot of times, doesn't care. I mean, you know what I mean, they have their rules that go by, and they know that they are the ruling factor, and, and, and I just think that's rude and very just, um, unconsidered of them, you know, to use our resources here on the local, local level and not have any results or not have any say in anything that's happening. So, I think those type of things, um, I think we could probably jiggle some doors on and, and get some people fired up about, you know, that kinda stuff. Um, and, you know, Keith was saying, as far as a lot of things that aren't, that are relevant anymore in the matrix, um, you know, that's probably true too. But if you take those away and are gonna give nothing else, then there's a give and take there that has to probably happen too. I don't know what your thought is on that, but I'm just kind of thinking if you take positive things away, you're not willing to give anything back, then we're gonna really cut down, you know, on the, on the amount of people that, um, are, are actually gonna be able to build. I think I saw one, I think you guys probably saw this, with Farborough put out a, or someone put out a map that if every single thing was, was followed, you know, and, and the things that people wanted to have in the matrix, there's no place in Webster or Humboldt County to even build anymore. You know, I mean, there are more very slim little white spots here and there that were eligible to build, and I don't know if we wanna go that far either, but...
No, we don't wanna go over extreme, like you're saying, I like, uh, pit just as well as anybody else. I, uh, pork all the time. No, we don't wanna go over extreme. Like you say, I like, uh, pit just as well as anybody else. I, uh, port all the time, but, what we're trying to get at is our hands are tied because the legislature, the state, uh, guidelines say that we cannot do nothing. And we just want a little bit of control over where they're going.
Or at least you wanna know what you're.
What we're getting into.
What, what you're able to control.
I'd like to know that if it's gonna be in the southeast corner of the, the section on that four acres, they're gonna be just like I build a, I have a house across the street and I'm gonna put a garage.
Drill it here.
My neighbor wants to know that it's forty-eight feet off of the property line. It's gonna be forty-eight feet, not four.
Yeah, I, and, and I can, and, and I'm not saying that's not true, but, you know, what sites we, we do, if we're off very far, the DNR catches that right now and we gotta justify that, so. And maybe that, and maybe it's happening in Humboldt County, but it's, I don't know. It, the DNR does not like it when, and we have, we have to set pins where those corners of those buildings are going and if they don't get built there, there's, there's hell to pay. So I.
I'm going by what we've been told. I haven't been out to a site. We've been told that, right?
One thing too, I guess, one of our resolutions was that they record their manure management easements in our county. I, I color code my plat books when I get an application to come here and, and I keep track of who's being, you know, what ground is being spread on and color coded. That was when I kinda got into the issue when we went down to EDC and that's how I caught the two hundred and forty-four acres that was booked for, for two different sites. The communication isn't there, um, from this one company to go, and I'll use, use them as my example because I would have had to go down to Des Moines, had they communicated with me, oh yeah, you know, you're right, we'll switch it here, this is what we're gonna do. That's all it would have taken. But it's one of those things where I don't need you to know, so you're out of the loop, that kind of thing. I went down there and basically got going cited. But we asked in one of our resolutions that they record their manure management agreements up here. We don't have to. You can't make us and you're out of luck. So that is something I would like to, just so that as a county, we can keep an eye on that. And I know it's important that, that, you know, there's, there's other people that want it. Let's give them the opportunity.
A couple of things. One, you can have multiple, you can, I can have one of my eighties in four plans if I want to. Um, the DNR, if I applied from two of those sites, in fact, I could apply to two of, from two of those sites, as long as I didn't overapply total N, total P. Um, I could apply manure to an eighty, you know, for example, say if I had rye growing and I put down, you know, in the fall, I put down some for the rye and then we harvested the rye and we took it off and then came back in and planted corn or whatever. So that's, it's not illegal to have multiple sites for one farm. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, you, you know all, you can do your coloring in on your maps now. Every manure management plan has all the fields that are gonna be applied to, so you can, you can know all those farms right now. Whether they, whether they record, you know, agreements or not, we're probably never gonna be able to get agreements recorded because some farmers just don't wanna do that. Um, you know, if they, an investor had farm ground, he wants the manure, but he's probably not gonna record in an agreement, um, just because of the cost and the headache and if he wants to get out of the agreement. I mean, most guys right now are doing evergreen agreements, which are, you know, they'll just, they just go on unless one guy, unless the hog unit guy says, you know, we're not giving you manure anymore. Or the farmer says, I don't want the manure anymore. Um, but you can, you know all those farms right now because they're in the plan. You cannot, in the state of Iowa, apply manure to a farm ground, to farm ground that is not in the plan. So, you know, they, if they wanna add a farm a year later, they have to bring that to the county, so that gets added to the plan. So you, you know all those, um, already. Whether there's an agreement or not, you know, wouldn't make any difference. You can still know all the farms that are part of that plan.
If those, if those buildings are down to say a, you know, foot or a foot and a half, if they sat empty for a while, that is a huge fluctuation of how many acres that building can cover. So, you know, they, I know some went to dry feeders, some went to the wet, dry feeders and it cut down on the amount of water, the waste, but it made the, the manure a little better quality. Um, some of those buildings were barely over half full. By the time they did that, you weren't getting near as much coverage on the, on the acres for, for what you had. And like you said, your eighty, having a couple of different sites, it might be covered with this building, but it might also have to have some of this because you didn't have enough for that to, so those are.
And that's the reason you, that's the reason as me, as a farmer that doesn't have pigs, that's why I'd wanna be part of a couple of sites, just for that reason, Bruce. Is because, because they wouldn't have it. And you never know, I mean, for instance, you take a hot summer where it's unbelievably hot, like it was in July, those misters are running all the time on those pigs. That's a lot of extra water. And you take a summer where it's cool and the misters hardly run, well, then, then you're, so it's, it's, once again, it's, it's not, it's not a, a corporation, Carl, because it's still agriculture. Because just for instance, the misters. So when we, the misters run in a hot summer, you have a lot more water and then thus the manure is less than, than what we wrote the plan on. So the nitrogen, instead of being forty-five, might be thirty-seven. Well, we've gotta readjust everything. So, you know, it's not like the factory where the water that comes out of the pipe, it's the same every day. It's easy to regulate that. It's not easy to, it's not easy to regulate something that changes every day.
I have a question about that manure management plan. I got some land over in Beattavista County. We got a farmer that hauls manure on that, have a plan, the whole bit. It's not recorded. What's, friend, a neighbor from five miles away come over and puts some more manure on my land. The other guy wouldn't know about it. It's not recorded. I would know about it, but I couldn't care less.
Well, you'd be breaking the law then, Carl, because that's state law. If, if a farm is, now, if, if you had that farm and it wasn't part of a manure management plan, then you'd be like what JD said. If, if you don't, if you, if I have an eighty and I get manure from a small animal feeding operation, I can get all that manure and I can overapply it and then I can come in and put anhydrous on. Nope, there's nothing that says I can't do that. But if that farm is part of one manure management plan in the state of Iowa and you get that manure and then you let the number, another neighbor come in that, say he has a, he has a small cattle operation, he says, Carl, God, I gotta get rid of some manure. You let him do that and somebody reports you to the DNR and they find out about it, you're in a lot of trouble. Yep. So quit doing that. It's nice knowing you, Carl.
Board of adjustment, I'd like to say something that I think Mr. Sexton asked, what you think could help. And we deal with the master matrix here and we've put our recommendations in the board of supervisors. And we, you know, they all wanna be good neighbors and I'm speaking of, not necessarily the farmers, usually it's the large corporate ones we have difficulty with, is getting information. So we ask for information, just information. One of the things we ask for is like a building permit complete. We ask for copies of the matrix for the members on the board of adjustment. We may ask for the construction plans, which are usually included. Of course, the NPDES permit has to be. We oughta know that that's followed and applied for. And the manure management plan easements be recorded in the county. It, it just makes it so much simpler. It makes it better for the person that puts up the facility because he knows he's, it's recorded here, he can legally put it there. And the supervisors and all the people in the county know where it is going. The facility might be three miles away. The manure management plans might be three miles away. And then we do have a lot of geological factors here. We've got rivers, extreme, two rivers, major rivers, extreme amount of drainage. We do have some ag wells yet. We've got a large number of natural sinks. That's the reason we like to know this stuff. So we can address it with the people that wanna build the facility. Also, we'd like to see a copy of the survey showing where this facility is gonna be located. When we get them from, for example, Iowa Select, it's in, uh, broke down to a forty acre flat. Well, how can you establish setback distances when you're just within a forty acre flat? Where if you actually have the survey filed, everybody knows exactly where it's going. That way you know it's so many feet to a waterway, so many feet to an ag well, a residence, a well, anything. I mean, sometimes, uh, from one side of the forty to the other side of the forty acres could change that master matrix drastically. So we like to have a survey recorded. And we like to have furnished maps from them that show the ag wells, uh, rivers, sinks, residents, anything that might be of interest. Uh, the nearest can, capable, we like to see that. And sometimes it is there, so that, uh, it isn't conflicting with another one, increasing the sign, I forget what they call it. You can only have so many within a certain distance of you, of each other with, by the same owner. JD probably knows what they call that. What is that, JD? Uh, when the same owner has one.
Yeah, that's part of the rules. You can't have one.
Yeah.
Common management.
Well, that increases the number of capacities, which would change the, the matrix. And these are things we just ask. It's information. And we've dealt with, Iowa Select is one we deal with most generally. And they are just, we don't, we ain't gonna do that, just obstinate. Well, I say, you guys, don't you wanna be good neighbors? You always saying you do. But we, as a board of adjustment, have not seen an example of this. They just defy on everything we ask for. And in none of that, what we ask for is unreasonable. It's just good business. Like I say, how can you score a master matrix on setback distance when you don't know where other than forty acres it's gonna be sat? I mean, they might say it's in the southwest quarter, but not necessarily does it has to be there. So why not survey? It's gotta be surveyed sometime in a way.
So when the pins go in, when does that happen?
That, the pins, I've never, it's called a site inspection. You meet with, it's probably you, it's probably the, this young lady from the county and the DNR and either the consultant or the farmer, everybody involved, meets at a site and at that point, the pins are already there.
Why don't they survey at that?
Stakes or flags are already there and at that point, the DNR takes GPS points at, let's say it's one building or two buildings. We furnish the GPS points in our matrix, so that everybody already knows the GPS points. And the matrix, and the, and the DNR takes points at that, those GPS points at that time. So I don't understand how these, how these people are moving these buildings seventy-five feet like you guys are saying. I don't know how that happens.
Well, I'm asking, why won't they provide a survey? That's my question. Before it's actually built.
Probably because of cost.
You know, a multi-million dollar operation like that, and that's the cost of doing business. They're gonna survey it sometime in a way. Why not do it before and make it easy? Everybody'd get along better.
Are you saying a, an actual certified survey or are you saying just have aerial picture of a match on where the barn is?
A certified survey and then recorded at the recorder's office. Why not? Why not? I mean, that's business. It's a cost of doing business. Multi, they could. You know, that's, that's, that's not the real reason it isn't being done. I don't know exactly.
Well, it is required if you are within ten percent of any of your setback distances. A survey is required.
Well.
If you're within ten percent over a river or a house or a church or any of the millions of things we have to be setback from.
Why not all of them?
But I will, I will tell you now, there will not be much, there's gonna be few people that wanna go in and open up the matrix in the legislature. Um, but I do like, I do like the emailed copy part. Um.
The one thing, the one thing with that is taxpayers pay for my salary, they pay for my supplies. So it took me a ream and a half of paper to make the copies. And that is why we, we brought up this resolution. My taxpayers are paying for that, but yet these large corporations are not spending money on our main street or, they're not supporting our main street. So that is where I'm coming from on, on saying, you know, this is their business. This is, they're coming into our community, putting this up. I think that that, that dime should be on them and not on my taxpayers.
Do you feel we're unreasonable on these information that we ask for? I mean, is that unreasonable? As a legislator, is that unreasonable to you?
Well, I, I, no, I'm not saying it's unreasonable. I'm, uh, but I'm saying I'm, it is confusing to me because I, um.
What's confusing?
Well, it's confusing because a lot of the things you're saying.
Should already be done.
Should already be done. Um, you know, the survey, yeah, that's, that's probably not gonna happen, but when the DNR comes out and marks where those points are at, that's a, that's a public record. The DNR has that lat long on where the corners of those buildings are gonna be. And it's been my experience, if, if you move them ten foot, you will be answering to the Iowa DNR. And so I'm, I'm just confused as to why that's happening in Cal, or in Humboldt County. Um.
Maybe we check that closer than some of the other counties.
No, I don't think so. There's a lot of counties that check that pretty close. Um, but I do, but I do, I, you know, the, the whole furnishing email copies, digital copies.
That's something simple that could be added.
Well, it would, it doesn't have to be added in the matrix. That's what I'm saying. If, if we wanna do, if we wanna do some of these things, um, they're gonna have to be outside of the matrix because I just know there's, there's gonna be very little support to, to go into the matrix. And if there is, you know, that, fine, there is. But the email part, and I can understand where, I mean, if you're making copies for the board of adjustment, you're making copies for the supervisors, that's a lot of copies. You know, ma- a matrix permit plan is probably typically an inch thick or, or better. Um, and I don't think it's, I mean, I don't know that.
Good afternoon, Reed.
It is. And I don't think it's that much to ask. Most, most of that information is recorded digitally already uh, in the, in the consultant's office or whoever's doing the plan. So, um, you know, and as far as, I mean, maybe we can, we can do something about citing, um, I gotta think through that. I mean, I, I know we're not gonna be able to require surveys, you know, for all, for all sites, but maybe, you know, the DNR will furnish, furnish the counties those points. I, you know, I don't know. I got, I'd have to think, I'd have to think through how that's gotta play out, but.
Well, if those are in the DNR's possession, I would surely think that those.
Give them to us.
Well, they would give them. Yeah, that's where I'm confused because the DNR has to be at every site inspection.
Right.
And then there's a county supervisor there or a county, the represent, it's supposed to be a supervisor, um, but it can be a representative of the supervisors. Um, at that meeting and the consultants there and the farmers there or whoever wants to be there. Um, and so everybody's looking where those pins are at or a lot of times it's a stake. The DNR sets their, their device right on that stake and takes a reading. So if there's ever.
Keith has one question for you.
Uh, when you're done, when you're done.
When you're done, when you're done. In the end, you're our representative, and you, and the Board of Supervisors in your area are asking you to support us in opening up the matrix. You're telling us that you're not willing to do that at this time?
No, I'm not saying that, Keith. I'm, I'm one, well, we are two of 150 people.
Will you bring it up?
Just, just because we want it, I'll tell you what I'm trying to do. I brought up last year, in fact, I had a bill drafted, that, you know what, what the bigger problem today is? It's, it's one guy with two LLCs, 1,249 head buildings, and, and putting them right next to each other and skipping everything.
That's right.
That's a bigger problem in the state of Iowa right now than these, this matrix deal is. And I couldn't even, I just wanted to have a conversation about it, and I couldn't even get that done, Keith.
Is that because of Farm Bureau? They won't support you?
No, it's not because of Farm Bureau. It's just, it's.
That's what I get. You know, we're not gonna bring it up because Farm Bureau won't support it. I hear that every time I ask, what do you guys do?
No, I fight with, I fight with Farm Bureau all the time. And, but it, to me, that's a, that's a, to me, the problem we have right now, and I'll tell you, Debbie Durham's on, on it right now because it's affecting economic development. So, now Debbie Durham is talking to the speaker about, we've gotta do something so these people can't build all, and, no, I'll tell you who the biggest, the biggest problem probably is, the pork producers. You know, the pork producers got really mad at me when I introduced that legislation last year, that you couldn't do that. And, so, I, so I don't know. It's not, it's, it's not that we're not gonna do something, Keith, because somebody does, I, I recognize, I understand exactly what you guys are saying. But I've gotta build, I've gotta have some support down there before I run something or, or do something. Because then it's just Mike Sexton against 149 other people. And that's not gonna do me any good. So, but, and that's, and that's how, you know, if we can, and we, and that's the problem with opening up the matrix. You open up the matrix, and then, you know, it's gonna be a, a thunderstorm. It's gonna be a Harvey down there trying to get in there and do that. So, if we can do some things, and at some point, yeah, I think you're right, Keith. You know, churches and schools in the country, yep, are those easy free points? Yep. I can tell you all them, I do this every day. Distances to high quality, or high quality water. Very, you know, there's not very many high quality waters, so those are give me points. So, you know, there's a lot of easy points in the matrix. But I will tell you, at the end of the day, we do matrix sites once a week that, that can't get enough points. So, so the matrix does work as much as everybody thinks it fails, it, it does work. And so, that's why I'm saying if we can work without getting into the matrix, which I like the digital format, I think, I mean, that helps with some of what you guys are saying, is you gotta be able to have stuff that, that you can actually look at that is legible. And I, and I completely understand that. And, you know, and maybe, you know, we can float this down there. Maybe we can have surveys for permitted sites, you know? Because a permitted site is over 1,000 animal units. And so, those, underneath that, you're, you're talking about the, you know, the MMP and the Construction Design Statement. Are we gonna be able to do site surveys for all those now? That's, that's probably never gonna fly. But for matrix sites, can we require a survey? I, I don't know. There may be support for something like that. I don't know. But like, it's, you know, and I agree with you, you know, at some point, to carve off that seven and a half acres or 10 acres, there's a surveyor that's gonna show up and do that anyway because they sell that piece of property off, so.
So, they just as well do it to start with. And I'm gonna finish you up, and I'm just gonna say that I supported Republican views as I supported you people. I expect you to represent all sides, not just one side of this issue. And I think you guys are gonna need all you help you can get now at the State House because I think there's gonna be some major changing in the, the parties down there for a number of issues. So, I, I really think that, you ought to listen to everybody and try and give us representation and help us too. And it's not just the Humboldt County issue, it's throughout the state. And it isn't just the Humboldt issue either. I, I see a major shift in the, in the legislative parties, the State House, maybe even the governor. Because there's a lot of issues that the Republicans have been dealing with that some of them rode in on the Trump train, I think. And I think this is all gonna change. So, you might wanna listen to everybody, not just a few of the people in power. That's all I gotta say.
Well, I, you know, I just told you that I introduced that legislation to try to control this LLC problem. Was that popular with Republicans and, and the pork producers? Hell, no. I got my ass chewed a lot and was told, Mike, we're not gonna run that bill. Well, so I am listening to people, and I am trying to fix things. So, you know, and we do listen to everybody. You know, we have you guys, and we have, we have farmers, you know? And that's just like, you know, you, you know, you can talk about your issues of, of, you know, Chapter 20, which I'm sure you're talking about. You know, we represent a lot more people than our state employees than we do that are state employees. And so, yeah, are this, are the, you know, you're talking, you just mentioned that we should be careful because we made a lot of people mad or upset, and a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of changes.
You mean on this Humboldt issue?
No, on the other issues, you know?
What was that?
You were talking about. You said it's something else.
I think I got lost. Okay, I see. Now I know what you're talking about.
This type of threat that we're gonna do in office.
No, there was no threat. No threat, but it's a possibility, believe me. I'm, there's no threat.
There's a possibility that anything happened.
That's right. Because, you know, I think there are a lot of disappointed people right now. So, hopefully, it'll all work out for the best interest of all of us. And I've always supported you people.
That's fine.
And so, there's a lot of other people.
Our biggest, my biggest concern, and I kind of am negligent in this area because Mike kinda takes over, I mean, I'm the one that's guilty of deappropriating all the money.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, that's my job, is I'm on all the, all the boards or the committees that are, are doing appropriations. So, that's fun too, to try to get money to spend when you don't have it.
Speaking about this, it's a public thing. Now, you brought it up. Ivers, where are you on that issue?
Well, that's a different.
Yeah, we better not. We don't think anybody has that much time.
Good boy.
I have one, I have one thing to add, because this is gonna go back to the master matrix, and I know you've already spoken on that. I've approached one of the larger companies, and I said, because I, for my other job, I'm on the road all the time. So, when I go down the interstate, I see the trees around the hog sites. You can't see them. You can smell them a lot of times when you drive by, but you can't see them. So, I approached that, I said, so, why, why here in Humboldt County do you not take, take advantage of that? You know, because there's some points there for putting the trees around. And it's basically like, it's not worth our time. The confinement will outlive, or it won't outlive the trees. Then they've gotta go in and take them down. I'm just thinking that's simple and that's a good conservation, you know? That's just really a part of being a good neighbor. Is there any way to maybe bring something like that to the forefront, make points like that more important?
Well, then you're going into the matrix, which I.
Yeah.
Told you would, it would be tough to do. These, some of these things to do outside of the matrix, I think are doable. But I just don't think we're gonna be able to go into the matrix. And, and, you know, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe there's, maybe there'll be enough people that want to do it, but I, as I sat here today, that's what my gut would tell me.
And like I said last time at the meeting, there isn't a matrix site that I know of that doesn't, that doesn't include things that the owners don't want. So, whether it's further setbacks, whether it's trees, whether it's composting, whether it's truck turnarounds, all those sites have had to do something they probably wouldn't wanna do if it wasn't for the matrix. So, I, I guess I'm saying that the matrix is working, they're adding things that they don't want to do, whether it's trees or whatever it is. But they're all doing extra above and beyond what they need to, right now.
I think the overall consensus of this is more communication, or clearer, clearer communications. And that's, really, that's something, something simple.
Well, and I think a lot of it too is just respect from the state to the local government. It just seems like there's no respect. You know, I think that's, you're feeling like, you know, why do we waste our time when everything's all set and, you know, and maybe it isn't.
Well, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for giving some of your time.
Get you back out on the parade route.
Yep. Well, we'll be back over here tonight. We'll probably see you all tonight. So. All right. Yep, thank you. Thanks Eric. Yep. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a brief recess?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, let's take a short recess.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah. We got this.
One thing I would like to know, and I think in a necessary study, maybe J.D. would be having.
I just not follow everybody.[1272.73]